Well, call this meeting the Christiansburg Town Council order. We're gonna observe a moment or so of reflection for anything that's on your mind, thoughts, family, business, personal, whatever. Thank you. I'd like to pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Mayor?
Amendment to the present agenda, the April 18th minutes because of a short week notice. We don't have those in the packet, so we will defer those to next week.
Okay. So we'll strike the April 18th out of the section.
Yes.
All right.
And also, we'd have a presentation from Cassandra Sabo, Della Akers, and Courtney Baker in regards to the Relay for Life for Montgomery County.
All right. We will add them to Item D, Section 6, Item D. Anything else? That's all. Council?
Motion that we amend the agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Commander Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilman Scholwalt?
Aye.
That is 5:01 a.m. Is that correct? Mr. Stikes will be delayed if he makes it tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We have three public hearings to come before council tonight. The first is a conditional use permit request by Terry Stike, agent for P.A. Duncan Management, Inc., for a public amusement business at 200 Midway Plaza Drive Northwest, Tax parcel 406-2-6A, 6B, in the B3 General Business District, approximately 4.1 acres, and in the I2 General Industrial District, approximately .08 acres. Is there anyone here to address this? Mr. Stike? Mayor from Adelaide, Terry, if you give us your name and address.
Anyway, it's Terry Stike from the Extreme Springs Trampoline Park. Do you want the address of the business?
It'd be fine.
200 Midway Plaza in Christiansburg. And I'm here to answer questions for anything you guys would like to know about our project. Trampoline Park is the newest, most upcoming thing in the United States toward entertainment right now. And we're gonna have the first one around this direct area except for site.
Mr. Stike, I'll tell you, this is just on the, of course, the agenda as a CUP request this evening, and it's actually on the agenda for a vote as well, but apparently word's gotten around because I've received some phone calls and so a lot of interest in this being done. Frankly, even some individuals who are somewhat irritated haven't been done yet. And so I think there's not gonna be a want or a need for people to be trying to utilize the facility. Seems to me like they're kinda chomping at the bit. But it's a great, I will tell you, it's a very good location for it as well. That site currently is unused, correct?
Right.
And it is an indoor facility.
Right.
Very good.
And it's set up absolutely perfect for what we're gonna do, for exiting from the skating rink and going into a trampoline park.
And clearly parking is adequate out at that location as well.
Absolutely.
Tell you why you've done a lot of good work for the youth and the people of Montgomery County and Christiansburg for many years as a bowling alley, and I know it's gonna continue on. And we appreciate your interest and your desire to work with the youth and to make the quality of life better for them. And we appreciate that.
Our goal was to continue the family entertainment with this project and then maybe another one or two for the area as we go, but definitely for family entertainment, we're having a lot of fun with it.
And Mr. Stike, we've got one last question for you, and not trying to put the cart before the horse here, but you are, with the vote tonight, you are ready to really get moving on this, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, we have a company, Supreme Trampolines, out of Nebraska that's already designing the park for us and already started to put it together.
Thank you.
It should be starting to be delivered in about a month, and it should be open sometime in July, if we can get it out tonight.
Any other questions, John? Any questions from the audience? Thank you, Mr. Stike. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The second resoning request by Snyder Hunt Company, LLP, for a 7.93 acre portion of tax map number 435A40 located north of Quinn Stewart Boulevard Northwest from R1 single-family residence to R3 multifamily residential. Anyone here to address this?
Good evening, council. Name's Steve Samos and Paul's are the associates with the Design Department, representing Estates and Homes, and Todd Robertson here tonight. We're gonna tag team this just a little bit in a presentation to you. A little bit of background, I guess about three summers ago, summer of 2014, we were before you for the first resoning request on this piece of property, about 35, 36 acres, on the backside of the Halberstadt property, kind of wrapping in behind and beside the Villas of Pepper's Ferry. The resoning request we asked for and eventually was approved for that property was for a single-family subdivision of about 78 lots, road infrastructure, water, sewer, stormwater management. About a year later, we came back and there was a 10-acre parcel between that and Quin W. Stewart Boulevard just west of the Villas. We came back in and asked for a resoning request to an R3 PRD for a multifamily Class A luxury apartment complex. Where we are right now with those two projects, the single-family subdivision, we had moved through construction plans and up until just a few months ago, I guess right before Christmas, we were pretty close to having those subdivision plans approved by town staff, ready to start construction. We've also been working through the apartment construction plans, the site plans and architecturals on that. Those are approved now, just waiting for bonds to be placed, and we're hoping to start construction on those here within the next 30 to 60 days on the apartment piece of it. Back, as I said, right before Christmas, Mr. Robertson and the rest of his folks at Estates and Homes were going through the final pieces of putting subdivision plans together. And Todd's gonna speak a little bit about this, as I said, we'll kinda tag team this a little bit. But it came down to, we needed to come back and look at how we might be able to create a little bit more density and a little bit more product type in the subdivision area that we had rezoned back in 2014, which is following here before you tonight. So at about a seven and a half, between seven and a half and eight acre piece of property in between the apartment zone property and the rest of the single-family that we're asking to be rezoned from the R1 PRD that we had approved to an R3 to allow for three different types of townhomes that we'll show you in our presentation tonight. These are three different sizes with garages, again, nice Class A townhome product, alleyway loaded, which again, we'll kinda show you through the concept plan a little bit tonight. But that's the reason we're here before you tonight, and I'm gonna let Todd just speak a little bit on some more of the details.
Good evening, council, and Mr. Mayor. I'm Todd Robertson, the owner of Estates and Homes. So I think, just to have a little bit of understanding of why we're back, am I not slightly starting to drift a little? Now I'm going through that transition of being able to look and look far away, so excuse me if I stumble a couple times. So we had been ready to start Clifton, which is the name of this new community, for a few months. And we went through the process of obtaining bids, we got all the construction costs in line, we got the bank approval. As a matter of fact, we had approvals from two different banks. And obviously, and how that works, it's contingent upon the appraisal of the property. And so as we started in marrying the two things up, it became obvious that the appraisal from both banks came in about a million dollars short. So at that point, Todd, we had to go back to the drawing board and figure out, well, okay, what the cost to develop this property is this, we've got to get the value of the property up to be at least the value of the appraisal in order for the banks to provide financing for us. So why does this proposal, as you'll see in a few minutes when Steve will go through it, why does it make it viable at this point? And there's really two reasons that that happens. First, and probably most obvious to you, the proposed layout allows us to add more home sites to distribute the cost and also to add value to the appraise based on the number of lots that we have there as well. But number two, and really just as importantly, is that we've created four different product types in here. And so we have single-family homes, we have 42 single-family estate-type lots that will be still part of the community. We have 28 villas, which are first-floor master bedrooms with two-car garages, two bedrooms upstairs, targeted more to a downsizing-type buyer. And then there are 53 townhomes that would be two- and three-story townhomes, including the basement being one of those floors. And by having that very product line, we can sell to a big distribution of price ranges. Much like the community of Cambria Crossing, where you have townhomes, you have a villa product there, and you have higher-end single-family homes, we've built 62 homes in that community as well, almost equally split between townhomes and single-family homes, so we understand the market and pretty well, and we understand the demand there. But because appraisers use a discounted cash flow method to kinda back into the value of this property from their point of view, the quicker we can sell through the community, then the faster that stream of funds comes back to the bank, so therefore it adds value to the overall project. And that's very important. And by changing it to four different product types, all of a sudden, we can really decrease the total amount of time we're in this community by near half of the amount allotted time that we would otherwise be in it with the 76 single-family homes. During the process, from December to where we first submitted this rezoning request, and Andrew, if you could put on the screen the specific area in question, it would kinda help you walk through this. There's a number of things we took into consideration. First and foremost, we reached out to some of our neighbors here, the board at the Villas of Pepper's Ferry, and let them know kinda what was going on. And then we went back through, and if you could go to the slide where it actually shows our product. One more, I think it goes into just that specific area. Maybe even one more. There you go. So, and I don't wanna walk away from the microphone, if I try to talk loud enough where you hear me, but there's a couple of things we tried to consider here. First of all, we wanted to create that traditional downtown, traditional neighborhood development, and I think that's called out for in the UDA, for example. And it was a product that we like. We're also involved in a community called Delville Town Center. We purchased the rest of the lots there in Baduak County. And we wanted to create that pedestrian-type feel, also keeping cars off the driveways or out of the high visible areas. So as you see here, as you come in John Adams Drive, we created these courtyards. So each courtyard is served by sidewalks, but we have alleyways that connect to allow the parking, and the townhomes here along the courtyards have two-car garages. So the cars will not be visible from the main street here. So we really wanted the focus to be on the fronts of the homes. And so the alleyways also allowed us to do that as well.
Show me where the Villas are.
Sure. So the villas are right here. This is our 42 single-family home sites here. This are our villas, that are proposed villas that we have. What we tried to do here was to keep the roads, because we've done the engineering on this, and that all works, and so we didn't wanna go in and just completely redo everything. So the villas are a bigger, a little bigger home, and so from the street appearance, if you have a car, and they have two-car garages as well, it sets back from the road, it's not quite, it's a better street appearance, I guess, for the bigger townhomes to be on the outside here. And then the apartments that we are getting ready to start in the next 30 to 60 days, there's 168 luxury apartments that will be going in here.
The total number for everything, when this is all completed, single-family, how many do we have?
124.
124.
Which is slightly less for density than, say, the villas here and considerably less than the apartments here as well. Obviously, the apartments.
Now, the single-family, that, when will that start?
It will all start at the same time.
Everything start, okay.
Yep. And that's part of our goal here, so we can be marketing to different buyers at the same time. We expect the townhomes to sell from anywhere from 220 up to 240. The villas will be in the 280 to 330 range, and the single-family detached homes in the 42 lots in the back will be anywhere from 320 to 425.
Mr. Robertson, the individual single-family residences up in the top-left area?
Yes.
What is the average acreage for each of those? I'm just trying to get myself an idea as to the size of the equipment.
I think they're just less than a quarter of an acre.
Okay. And those are the items that, less than a quarter, they're gonna be going for 320 to 425?
That's correct. And that's where, when we are buying homes in Cambria Crossing that are selling, our average sales price there is just in the around the 330 to 340 range there at Cambria Crossing. And it's, the lot sizes are almost identical. We consider this a slight, a better location, and as we continue this process, we have, you know, it's certainly walking air distance from shopping, restaurants, and, you know, the soon-to-be park as well. I mentioned before the courtyards and the pedestrian feel. We have connected at the top here, there is a walkway that was part of the original proposal, but we're also adding sidewalks in front of the townhomes as well as in front of the courtyards. And then, as I mentioned, based on our success that we've seen at Cambria Crossing, we know that there's a demand for this product out there. Our buyers come from, at Cambria Crossing, for example, come from all over the United States, coming in for, you know, different positions at Virginia Tech or Research, and we feel like there's a strong market for this.
If I lived in this courtyard, how am I gonna get out to Pepper's Ferry?
So these alleyways are supposed to be one-way, and so you would enter from John Adams here. And so if you lived in this courtyard?
Yes, sir.
You would back out and pull down the alleyway here onto Washington Avenue and back around to John Adams, which connects to Quinn Stewart Boulevard and will come out at the new traffic light.
So a couple of other things, as we were working through, Todd said we had a meeting with the board as well as the entire community, neighborhood meeting with the folks at the Villas of Pepper's Ferry. Heard, answered a lot of questions, got a lot of feedback, made some amendments to our application after we submitted. Based on those comments, we've been, you know, continued as we've gone through planning commission to update the plan to help offset some of those mitigation or mitigate some of the concerns that we've heard on that. As Todd mentioned, the trail that you see up on the top part of John Adams Drive, one thing to consider is that all the original proffers that we had in there in the first round of the rezoning are still apply. We're not planning to remove any proffers. The conditions, and I'm sure everybody's got a copy of the conditions, the original conditions that planning commission and, of course, town council approved for the conditional use permits, that's kinda, this first, the second one kinda goes into the third request tonight, those conditions remain the same, and we actually have three additional ones, I believe it was three, that planning commission had requested and recommended that we were certainly fine with, which was adding some additional landscaping. Andrew, do you have? I'll pull those up. So there were a couple of things. One is, we had agreed with the Villas folks, if you go out to Quin W. Stewart right now, they've got that white bottomed, kinda split-rail fence hanging around and kinda tees, kinda turns the corner. So we had mentioned with the Villas folks, and planning commission thought it was a good idea to, to go ahead and run that fence all the way down to property line, so again, it gives another little bit of a separation between our project and the Villas. We've gone back in, reworked the landscaping. One of the, one of the proffers and conditions, or the conditions in the first round of the rezoning in '14 was to beef up the landscaping around the Villas at that property line, to be sure we were helping to mitigate any, you know, car lights going into that, just to again, try to help with some of that. Since we've got a new layout, we've gone back in, reworked some of the landscaping, added some additional landscaping as well. There was another condition recently to add landscaping on our side of the road, which we were gonna do, but they wanted to get it in a condition to be sure it was followed in a space that's similar to what's out there in Quin W. Stewart right now. So we have those. The alleys are one-way, as Todd mentioned, which again, we feel is really gonna help from an impact standpoint, where you're not gonna have car lights coming out bright at some of those residential units. Each entry going into the alleyways will be landscaped as well as the main road here. There are, I guess there's one other option, one other issue that we're working through with town staff right now, was the renaming of Washington. During our, during our plan review for the subdivision, Washington Avenue, which is kind of on the Villa side here, they've got Washington Avenue on their side, it was recommended that we use Washington Avenue on this. One of the things that we heard from the folks at the Villas was they asked us to change that name for several reasons. GPS, if there's confusion with GPS, somebody looking to get to this unit right there and goes through the Villas, there isn't a direct vehicular connection from the Villas across into our project. So we've asked staff to kinda take a look at that, see if there's another name we can use instead of Washington, but that was one of the concerns we heard. Again, we provided Andrew and the planning commission and some updates back on April 12th, again, referring to some of the concerns we had heard. We provided some cross-sections through the property, there were some, there were some concerns that would be, you know, our new units would be seemingly looming over the Villas. There is a pretty steep grade from the western end of the property down to the eastern property line. So we have custom cross-sections based on our proposed grading and included that in packets for planning commission, which I hope you guys have as well. We also provided yesterday, along with this plan, an architectural elevation on the sides of the units right here, showing that landscaping. Kinda looks in this rendering like a log cabin, it's not, but if you zoom in on there, it's a, it's a little bit better look, but that kinda gives the idea. You know, it's not a blank wall with no windows. There will be landscaping, you see kinda the height of the buildings, and you've got the first, second, and the third story. And again, that's gonna depend on the grading and where it is on the lots, but we really tried hard to go back, listen to our neighbors, and provide as much, I guess, ways that we can help mitigate some of those concerns that we were setting around. And I guess if it pleases council, we'd like to reserve a little bit of time at the end in case there are any questions, other questions you guys might have, or any questions we can answer with the residents that anybody speaks tonight that we might be able to answer as well.
The last time you made a presentation here, I thought that you talked about a swimming pool, a playground that went in with this piece of property. Am I wrong?
There's a swimming pool and a clubhouse that's proposed with the apartments.
With the apartments.
Right. With this plan, we actually picked up about, is it half an acre? About a half an acre more open space than we had in the single-family subdivision layout. So that loop where you had the alleyways and the courtyards, just to the north of that, there's a big block of open space, so we've got some more recreational and open space with this layout than we did previously. But the clubhouse and the pool, you'll probably remember, Steve, was on the apartments.
Okay, okay. There is a playground.
Yeah, we do have a playground further back into the subdivision. So this is that section of open space, where beforehand, we had, we had lots, kind of all the way down front on both John Adams and the street as well, kinda coming down here to get some of the open space now with this current layout.
You know, I know you can't determine who is gonna move into, you know, what type of homes, but sometimes you do have that idea. This courtyard, is this for senior citizens or young? Is there anywhere that this is designed for? I'll think of maybe the traffic at 8:30 in the morning.
I think it is targeted toward, you know, and I'm gonna use my experience at Cambria Crossing, because I think it's a very similar buyer. We do see, you know, sometimes single parents with children, and we also see young professionals are really our two primary buyers there.
Any other questions at this point? We will reserve you some time. Now, I see a familiar crowd of people in the audience. I do have record, and we have a, in our packet, we have a record of 17 comments, different families. I'm gonna open this up for anyone that wishes to speak. I would like to, I would like to keep your comments as brief as possible. I'm not gonna tell you you got three minutes, and I'm not gonna tell you you got five, but I think somewhere in that range would be good. And if, you know, if someone before you has the same comments and concerns that you do, if you feel comfortable with what they've said, then, you know, you can stand with them. So, is there anyone here that would like to address this? Yes, sir?
Yes. Thank you. Still the mic. Good evening, neighbors. My name is Spencer Taylor, and I'm one of the seniors that lives over here in the Villas. So I'd like to give you something of a view as I see it from the Villas and then make a recommendation. To start with, the Villas is a small village of patio homes that's been designed for and is largely occupied by senior citizens. It's a low-density development. We have about 148 homes located on 27 acres, arranged into 37 buildings, clustered in little groups of four houses joined at the garages. That's 1.4 buildings per acre or 5.5 homes per acre. All the homes have gardens, yards, and inside and outside parking. The streets are wide with off-street parking available for visitors. We have wetlands, green spaces, gardens, a clubhouse with a gym, and a picnic area. Now, the interesting thing about that is we're rated R3 because of these little clusters of four buildings joined. Now, we take a lot of pride in this place, and we manage it accordingly. It's beautifully landscaped, it's kept clean, and it's manicured. You'll find no dirty streets, no broken mailboxes, and no missing roof tiles. In fact, our ongoing upgrades and maintenance have produced a development that today is probably better than when it was originally built. Now, to do this, we expend a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of money, at the same time, working to ensure that the same is gonna be true 20 years from now and beyond. Now, why do we do this? Well, we do all of that work partly to maintain our quality of life, which is significant, and partly to maintain high resale values, which ties in with this discussion we're having tonight. Resale values are particularly of interest for senior citizens. Now, why is that? Well, when we live, when we leave the Villas, we go generally to one of two places, assisted living or the graveyard. The final sale or resale of one of our homes is the thing that pays for that assisted living or provides an inheritance for our children or our grandchildren. So we pay a lot of attention to maintaining resale values. Now, for some time, Snyder Hunt has had this plan to surround the side of the Villas and the back of the Villas with single-family detached homes. The homes were gonna be well-built, well-designed, and that plan was a good one. It would've resulted in housing similar in density to the Villas, as well as a design concept that harmonizes and actually complements both the Villas and the houses above on Stafford. Tonight, however, we're discussing a dramatic change in both the density and the design on this small, steep hillside parcel. on this small, steep hillside parcel next to the Villas. The builder now wants to jam 87 homes into a space of less than eight acres. That's an increase of 48 more than the original plan, or a total of 11 houses per acre. Now, increased density creates a whole lot of problems. You'll probably hear more about it tonight. You've already asked a few questions. Everything from traffic congestion to increased runoff. However, in addition to that, more than doubling the planned density also dictates a project design, as I was talking about, that's really not complementary or in harmony with the adjacent housing. The proposed design, and you can see it on some of their drawings, calls for long rows, long, solid rows of two- and three-story structures, climbing up this hillside, culminating at the top ridge line. Now, that is going to dominate the view from the Villas, including rooftops in the new development, that'll be as much as 50 feet higher than the rooftops of the Villas. I think that's gonna result in a real impact, or a likely impact, on the Villas resale values. Now, it's been mentioned that the fellows came out and talked to us, and of course, we asked them, why in the world do you want to increase the density on this parcel next to us by so much? And let me read what they told us. The first one was, "Development costs have risen sharply due to late stormwater and erosion requirements in the grading plan, once the construction drawings were complete." Then they went on and said, "We felt like we could absorb those costs," and kept moving forward. After two lenders had proposed, had the property appraised, excuse me, the resulting appraisals fell well short of the expected value. The appraised value from both appraisals, for the completed lots came in about a million dollars short of the needed value to move forward, it became clear that it wouldn't be feasible with the existing plans. Well, when I saw that, and looked at it a time or two, two things stuck out at me. Snyder Hunt said they can absorb the increased costs. Let me say that again. Snyder Hunt said, "We believe that we can absorb the costs and keep moving." Second thing that was said, was the lenders wanted to increase the final market value by a million dollars. Okay, well, you just heard, the homes are gonna be priced in the range of $250,000. That's only four houses, not 48. So I'm very confused. Well, at the same time, if we really do wind up impacting the resale value of the Villas, it wouldn't take much. And you may be making a decision to make this project more profitable at the expense of the Villas. You gotta realize that today, the market value of the Villas is something of the order of $35 million. Well, a million dollars, the million dollars we're talking about is less than 3% in terms of a decrease in value. I think that's likely, personally. And at the same time, the situation may even be worse than that. We've had at least one of our neighbors talk to his Realtor. Realtor suggested the minute this construction starts, he's gonna lose $25,000 on his resale. That's almost 10%. Now, in the Villas, the Villas are unusual. There are no comparables, if you're a purchaser or a seller. The only comparables are the other Villas, because they're close by, same design, and so on. And I'm a recent purchaser, I went through this. So as you impact the resale value of almost any Villa there, it rolls through snowballs through everybody's facility. So, in summary, that's my view from the Villas, I think it's probably shared by a lot of my senior neighbors, and the result is, I want to make a request. And the request is that you do not make a decision tonight of either one of these. Instead, you wait until you can get two critical pieces of additional information. The first one is, try to get a quantified value for how much this project may in fact decrease the market value of the Villas. Again, we're talking senior citizens. And the second is, I think you need to probe in a lot more detail. We've heard words like net present value discount factor, those are things I'm familiar with, but I think you need to probe a little further. Is it really needed that we put in 48 houses? If it's like I suspect, many, many fewer will do the trick. If we reduce the number, we can change the design to something that's a lot more compatible. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, I will tell you, we are not making a decision on this tonight. This is the first public hearing.
Well, good. I'm satisfied then. But I'll leave this with Andy, then we can apply it the next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there someone else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Marty Sax. I live at 310 Revolution Circle. My husband and I moved to Montgomery County in 2008, from the upstate of South Carolina, Anderson County, where I was an electrical engineer for Duke Power Company and distribution engineering. As part of my job responsibilities, I routinely work with industrial, commercial, and residential developers on new construction sites. I have extensive experience working with builders. I worked closely with the city and county planning departments, the economic development board, the Anderson County Home Builders Association, and was a Duke Power engineering liaison for the Anderson County Planning and Development Task Force. Anderson County was and is committed to intelligent growth, with not just zoning, but comprehensive planning, by putting land use regulations and restrictions in place that promote the most effective, desirable, and harmonious use of land, while preserving areas of ecological, aesthetic, historical, and cultural significance. Unfortunately, I had been unable to find comprehensive planning or land use planning anywhere in Montgomery County. When my husband and I were shopping for our home, we thought we could easily find a neighborhood with nice and affordable, single ranch, family-style homes with two-car garages with just one level. Not so. We were stunned. What we found was a mishmash, a split-level and two-story homes, squashed together, with very little lawns, separated by row after row of townhouses. Whoa. But then we noticed the Villas of Peppers Ferry, quietly hidden behind the New River Mall. A truly unique, modern planned community that fit our needs, one-level living, maintenance-free, two-car garage, only six miles from my husband's work, and best of all, a clubhouse with planned activities, and an opportunity to make an instant circle friends. We loved it, we still do. There's no place like the Villas anywhere in Montgomery County. So when Snyder Hunt announced their plans to develop the properties surrounding the Villas, we were sad, but we weren't surprised. We accepted the fact that we would have to share our birds, our deer, our peace, and our quiet. What we were not prepared for was the zero lot lines, the high-density footprint that Snyder Hunt is proposing. This multifaceted construction zone, beginning with the apartments in May, then the townhouses in June, as requested, will simply replicate poor planning examples already in Christiansburg, at Cambria Crossing, Oak Tree, and Lime Gate, to name a few. They're not desirable, harmonious, or aesthetic uses of the land. Tonight, you have an opportunity to do better planning. So please, I implore you, put land use restrictions in place. Do not approve Snyder Hunt's home request to construct high-density footprints beside the Villas of Peppers Ferry. We can do better. We can have a comprehensive planning program in Montgomery County. We can do better, people. Please.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. I have a gentleman right in front, or further front than you, sir.
My name is Art Wilson, I live at 220 Revolution Circle. I've been there since 2011, and basically, I've emailed the council a copy of what I'm gonna pass out, I just wanna give the signed copy to you all. I am opposed to the construction, but I am a realist, and I know that something's gonna be done. My biggest concern is whether or not we are actually being provided with truthful information as far as the reasons for this change in density request. The other is, I know that the planning commission came out and viewed the property, but nobody was actually shown what's gonna, how it's gonna be affected as far as being blocked goes. Well, I live, basically, here at this end of Revolution Circle, and I've provided photographs in what I'm giving out, and what I've sent. And basically, if you look out from my residence, down Revolution Circle, that entire side of the hill there that you see, except for the treetops for some of the trees on Stafford Drive, is now gonna be blocked. And I, like I said, I've provided a photograph that shows what area will be blocked, and we will be able to see some of the homes on the other end, but it's not, not gonna affect us that much. But I will provide the copies.
Thank you.
Only got seven, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Tom Sireish, I live at 90 Revolution Circle, the Villas of Peppers Ferry. I am a member of the Board of Directors for the condo association, and Secretary for the Association of the Villas. I want to stress, I am not representing the association, I'm representing myself. And some of the folks have already made, taken some of the thunder out of my remarks, so I'll try to skip away there. But if there's any theme you want to hear from me, it's one about assurances made and assurances broken. A number of years ago, and again, I've only been in town for two years, less than two years, but the first meeting I went to when I moved down here in July of 2015, was a meeting with the applicant, telling us about how he wants to put apartments on this parcel, and about the need that the area needs for housing, rental housing for young professionals and whatever. And we sort of bought into that concept with the clear understanding that the rest of the parcel was gonna be single-family detached housing. And that was stressed pretty hard, says, you know, go along with the, with the high rise of apartments, don't worry, the rest of it's gonna be single-family detached housing. Well, here we are. The original plan, as it was pitched to us, called for 76 detached houses. What's in front of you tonight is a 45% reduction in the detached housing. It's going from 76 detached houses to 42. That's nearly cut in half. And at the same time, those 76 living units are going from 76 to 124. That is a 63%, it's a 63. something, I'm just gonna round it down, a 63% increase in the density of that parcel. So think about what's happening here. Assurances were made, go along with the apartments, don't worry, everything will be detached, single-family houses. Those single-family houses have plummeted by nearly 50%. The density of the parcel has increased by over 63%. If there's anything you need to hear tonight from me, that's that. Broken assurances were here because assurance that was given to us has been withdrawn. And I'm just gonna parenthetically say, the applicant has been upfront with us, you know, shared information, whatever. Doesn't, doesn't clear all the smoke from what we saw then, what we see now. And I did hear in the deliberations of the planning commission, I think I heard, I'll say that, because I don't know, I heard something along the lines, well, we've got to, how can we not approve the R3 for the applicant? The Villas of Peppers Ferry is R3. But that's all it takes to rezone a property, is to have your property a button R3 property. So I'm sure there's more to it than that, but as, as was mentioned by an earlier speaker, there's R3 and there's R3. If none of you have been to the Villas of Peppers Ferry, I encourage you to make sure you visit and look at it. Look at the Villas of Peppers Ferry, then look at your typical townhouse development. It's day and night. Fellow resident Bob McGee circulated a petition, and he is greatly disappointed that he cannot be here tonight, because he was called out of town on another important matter. But he lives at 470 Revolution Circle. I have here, I'd like to introduce a petition that was signed by 86 of our residents. 93 of our residents were apparently presented this petition to sign. He went door to door, they circulate, they didn't make an attempt to do 100%, but 86 of our residents signed this petition, 93 were offered a petition. So that's more than 90% of the people that were offered this petition, signed it, and the petition says, "Understand, do strongly object to the rezoning of 15th property from R1 to R3 townhouses." So, we have 86 signatures of people in our community that do not want this parcel rezoned from R1 to R3. And one final thing, I just want to compliment Andrew Warren for his cooperation. I've been totally impressed. I've emailed him a number of times with various, you know, questions, important and less so, and he's responded quickly and expansively, and I really appreciate my experience with the planning commission and with the Christiansburg government, this is my first foray, and it has been, has been a very positive one. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Wilson. If you'll leave the petition and information with inter-town manager, Winfield. Ms. Wegman? Mr. Mrs. Wegman, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I am Betsy Wegman, this is my husband, Oliver Wegman, and he is the sole reason I'm living in this area. He's one of those insane rabid hawks, and made the decision that we should do this 10 years ago. We made the decision to downsize, we moved here 10 years ago, and we have loved the Villas of Peppers Ferry, we looked everywhere. There's nowhere else like it. We went to the Peak다이코, we went to Auburn Hills, we went to the Vistas, we went to Tom's Creek. The Villas is perfect for us, and there's some lovely, lovely people there. And most of all, I don't want to see our community destroy it. I'm extremely concerned about the density of this project. I've lived on 35 acres, a quarter mile down the road, and that's where I'd still be if he hadn't wanted to come here so bad. We're looking at a minimum of 248 cars coming off of the road from back in there, John Adams to Quinn Stewart. Did you two vehicles, and that's just for the townhouses and the Villas and the single units. That doesn't count the traffic in the apartments. Think about it. Second of all, huge numbers create huge problems. I've spent my life and education, 47 years, in one capacity or another. The bigger the school, the bigger the problems. The more people you have, the more issues to be addressed. I am deeply concerned about water pollution, I'm deeply concerned about noise pollution, light pollution, privacy, and safety in a densely populated area like they're getting ready to create. I have talked with Mr. Jay Roberts in Roanoke, with the Wetlands Commission, having lived in Tidewater. I'm very familiar with the Wetlands Commission, and believe it or not, the same laws apply here as they do everywhere else in the state. If this zoning is changed, and if... If this zoning is changed, and if their stormwater management affects the wetlands that run through the villas in any way, then they will have to ask for rezoning, and they will have to go before the Wetlands Commission. They have to come up with a stormwater plan, and that will be on the town of Christiansburg, and I'm on top of it. Okay? I'm not going to let it slide. We haven't seen anything about what their stormwater plan is. We haven't seen anything about how they're going to handle that. And my goodness, have we not had enough rain for the last four days that you can see that that could easily be a problem? And that is steep land that's coming down off of Stafford. Think about it. Your environment is important. I've spent my whole life defending children, animals, and the environment. And I'm not going to stop now. I'll stay on top of it. Animals, I'm a research librarian, by the way, so I do a lot of research. Human beings are the only creatures on this earth that operate out of greed. Other creatures go after other creatures out of necessity, out of the need for food, out of the need for survival. Human beings are the only people who operate on a sense of greed. This has been changed for money reasons. And probably that's, probably the closest thing, that's the closest to the truth. It's all about making more money. Mr. Mayor and I had a conversation before this meeting started. Most of us around my age grew up in small towns. Wonderful places, wholesome places, good memories. Mr. Mayor, are you still proud of your town? True. So I like it here. I want it to stay a nice place. Please, just consider the density. Consider the safety. Consider the traffic. Consider the fact that all of our wildlife will be removed from that area. And I have five beautiful deer I see every morning. They're not even afraid of me. I talk to them and they stand there and turn their heads. I hear the wild turkeys, and I even have a bear that my dog and I have run into, and he goes his way and I go mine. You're going to destroy it all. And that greatly worries me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have had lots of conversation. I think there are a lot of areas that have been touched on. Certainly want to encourage you on if they have a different take on this or something else they would like to add. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Reed Nicholson, and I live at 230 Meadow Drive. You can see it on the map there. Stafford Farm is my neighborhood directly west of the property in question. And I'm similar to the other speakers in that I'm a neighbor. I differ in that I am in favor of this proposal. I spoke a few weeks ago in front of the planning commission, and my comments are in your minutes. They've been faithfully recorded, so I won't read them back to you. I told a little bit of context about my wife and I moving here 10 years ago, and I struggled to find housing that was suitable. And I spoke to the fact that what is proposed here is going to be exactly what my wife and I would have been looking for. So whether or not it is perfect for me now, because we enjoy our home, you know, I just think about the responsibility that we have as leaders in our communities to plan for the next generation and make sure there is suitable housing for the population that we are to attract in the next 10, 20, 30 years. What I've done in the intervening two weeks is looked over the comprehensive plan, and there's a lot there, but I've tried to read it. And especially in the land use section, there's a spirit of making sure that we develop our land in the most responsible way possible. And particularly as it relates to the amenities that we have and the assets that we as a town enjoy. So the shopping, the restaurants, the Huckleberry Trail, the park that is to come right across the street from, from this property, these are all assets that our residents want to be near. And if this is the most responsible use by increasing the density, then we need to consider that. We need to consider that there are going to be young families who are going to want access to the Huckleberry Trail and to the park. We want that in walking distance. So I guess I just ask the council to think about our responsibilities as leaders, and if that includes increasing density so that responsibly we could respect the spirit of the comprehensive plan and the development areas that have already been laid out by the town in a very strategic manner, that that is very well the best decision for us and for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Dowling.
My name is Catherine Dowling, and I reside at 200 Revolution Circle. Some of you recognize me as the president of the Homeowners Association of the Villas of Peppersbury. Please note that I am speaking for myself, and it is not appropriate for the collective board or an officer to take an official position. When I considered purchasing my home, I saw the beautiful adjacent open fields and land and thought, how wonderful would it be to live there? I did my homework, and I learned that the adjoining parcels were in the Christiansburg Future Residential Land Use Plan. So I purchased, knowing that at some point there would be additional residential development, possibly by the same developer, so that there could have been more R3 zone condominiums. I support the development known as Clifton. Yes, the additional townhomes bring a lot of extra traffic and density. That's not a good thing, but it's part of what we do when we grow. Given the unknowns and the range of negative possibilities that could happen if states and homes withdraws from this project, I feel that the Clifton will bring a selection of quality products to our area and complement what the villa has to offer. My biggest fear and nightmare would be to have surrounding parcels jammed with student housing apartments and crowded units, such as what we clearly see in other parts of Christiansburg. The Clifton project offers a variety of aesthetically pleasing choices. The anticipated population growth will demand housing for professionals. We need to provide housing that reflects the quality and standards that will attract these professionals, not student housing or otherwise. By making this choice now, we take steps to assure that the value of our homes are not diminished. We would also continue to erase the myth that Christiansburg is a, quote, "less than desirable place to live," unquote, than in some neighboring towns. Yes, there are other concerns, but these can and some have already been significantly worked out with the developer and the town of Christiansburg, most notably the stoplight at Quinn Stewart, which is scheduled for installation by this fall. I personally support rezoning with the following stipulation, however. The town of Christiansburg must not ignore the ongoing road condition and eventual increased traffic on Stafford Road. The town must carefully reexamine the issue of improving and widening Stafford Road. Funds must be allocated for the maintenance of both Stafford and Quinn Stewart. If traffic is not addressed, then both Stafford and Quinn Stewart will become the town of Christiansburg's worst nightmare. Certainly, the addition of the luxury apartments, single-family homes, and townhomes will significantly add to the tax base stream to fund the road improvements.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Bonnie? You're next.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Boenwright. I live at 480 Revolution Circle. I'm one of the unlucky ones. Mrs. Dowling here is the opposite end of the conflict, so it's easy for her to support something that's not going to affect her. My property is going to be about 15 feet from that main road. He has put the stakes up on the street. I suppose that's what the stakes are for. And I invite you all to please come out to the villas and look and check. I'm at 480. And then there's two across the street from me, right under the wall, that are also going to be badly affected. The lights, the noise, the traffic, these things are going to be coming right at my sunroom continuously. And that's where I spend most of my time. My patio is going to be ruined. I'm not going to be able to use it. My front door is also about 15 feet from this street. He had that whole lot, and he chose to put that street down there. And there, again, like the others ladies said, it was only for money. He does not care about people. He cares about money. But our quality of life is going to be greatly determined by this. And like Bob and other people have said, I, please come to see my unit. I probably won't be able to resell my unit because that street is just almost touching my fence and my patio. And there's also a safety issue that I'd like to address. The gas lines, the gas, all of the four units that I live in are right at the back of my unit. And that street right above it there is very close. There's going to be all a lot of people driving, older people, probably a lot of young people just learning to drive from this new place. And they're not going to go 25, which I suppose is going to be the speed limit. With that street being open, they're going to open it up. And then if there's bad weather, my concern is that some automobile or truck, or some vehicle, wrecks or runs off of that road and hits those gas lines. And I know it can happen because right after we approached you all for this the last time, it happened in Roanoke. A truck hit the gas lines, and there was an explosion, but luckily, there was no one at home. So I know it can happen, and it's, I'm fearful for it all the time. But then when I saw where the stake was on the corner of my property, so close to my sunroom, it's even more fearful. And I think that there should be some way to separate the properties. There's going to be a lot of animals, dogs, I don't know what else, cats pose the problem that dogs do when they have to go to the bathroom. But I doubt that all of those people that are going to be up there, all of those that have dogs, are going to be picking up after them. So we're going to have this herd of dogs coming in and taking over our yards and doing their jobs, and then these owners are going to leave it. Our people are really considerate. Everybody walks their dogs with a plastic bag. They pick up after them. But when you've got that many people up there that he's going to be putting into that area, people aren't going to go, you know, people are just not going to do it. I think there should be a wall. At first, I said 30-foot wall, which would tickle me pink. But a tall, six-foot wall, maybe chain-link fence or something there, that would protect those maybe gas lines in case a car does come off the street. And it would also keep the dogs up on the property where he's going to be putting all these people. I do hope you all would consider it. It's just going to ruin our life. It will definitely ruin my life. And I, please, I can't beg you enough to come look at where my yard and my unit is in relation to this road. Thanks for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beckroyd.
Ma'am, your address was 480 Revolution.
480 Revolution. I'm right up near, right at the end near the construction. I'm locked out.
Thank you, Bonnie. Yes, sir?
Hi, Charlie Sachs, 310 Revolution Circle. I'm not a senior citizen, and I live at the Villas of Peppersbury. Just so you know, it's not 55 and up, up for, for seniors only. We have families in there with children, just so you know. My beef today is, when I bought at the Villas of Peppersbury, my appraisal didn't come in either. And I had to cock up 30K in order to make this deal work. I feel that I couldn't increase anything in order to buy my home. And I think that the change to the 2014 plan, you guys had a plan. Stick to the plan. The plan was residential. Just because somebody shored on their plan and didn't decipher the calculations for stormwater correctly, we're going to pay for it. So I just think you should stick to the plan and stay with single-family residents. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Stanley, we will, we will get your part later. That's later in the program. Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Joe Chase. I live at 100 Revolution Circle at the Villas. I did speak before the planning commission, and I think I just want to reinforce what my neighbors have said. I hope that you'll really look at this density thing. I was really disappointed in the planning commission that they did not look at that a little bit closer. You know, we were looking there, and something my neighbor said, two years ago, we're thinking on eight acres there, talking about a maximum of 24 single-family houses. Now we're talking about 82. We always in townhouses. And I hope the board would consider that. I think if you lived in our neighborhood, then you would, you would be concerned about the density. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address counts on this particular issue? Hearing number one, I will close that portion of the public hearing. In contingent upon the above, rezoning request, conditional use permit request by Snyder Hunt Company LLP for a 7.93 acre portion of tax partial 435A40 located north of Quinn Stewart Boulevard Northwest for planned housing development in the R3 multifamily residential district. Anyone here to address that?
We touched on it, Steve, some notes and balls. We touched on it with the last public hearing. I did want to ask council if there's, if you'd like to address any of the concerns we heard tonight, any specifics. I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to answer any questions, or I'd be happy to address these in a letter and send it to council as well. and send it to counsel as well. Just wanted to make something available.
It's your pleasure. A letter, Steve's come forward. Mr. Semes come forward and address.
The only comment I had to make, I would like, if you could give me a call sometime this week and maybe we can meet over there. I would like to, I'd like to go around the whole thing.
Sure, and they did bring that up, or residents did, or neighbors did bring that up. We did, with the planning commission, was it last week? Yeah. Met out on site with the planning commission. We did, we did put some stakes out there. We wanted, we met up here at the top at the apartments to kind of get a view and get everybody oriented as far as where we were. We had several sets of stakes out there. We had the property line stake. We had the center line of the road stake. And we actually had the face of some of the proposed unit stake. So the planning commission and the residents that were out there from the villas could kind of see the distance away. Just for a reference sake, the property line between our property and the villas, there's a forty-foot building line. There's a forty-foot setback off of that line before you get to the first unit. So from the end of those units, there's forty feet up to our property line. Then we've got about another fifteen feet of green space and trail before you get to the road. So we've got about fifty-plus feet between the edge of the closest building and where our edge of the road will start.
Steve, can I ask you one quick question?
Yes, sir.
The residents have brought up a lot of points tonight. You've brought up a lot of points tonight. I think I've probably got half a legal pad full of notes that I've taken. So I don't think I was being rude. I was just writing a lot. Have to watch what I'm writing. But Steve, one question that's in my mind. The obviously C is contingent on B as far as the planning, the public hearing's receiving. But what is the, from a planning standpoint, if the rezoning from R1 to R3 is not approved, I hate to throw in a hypothetical, but what is the future of the original proposal that was presented some three years ago approximately, if the R1 to R3 is not approved? If you don't mind, I don't mean to put you on the spot. That's just something that's in my mind, to be honest with you.
Absolutely. And that gives me an opportunity to address what I think is a little bit of a common misconception anyhow. So Snyder Hunt is the owner of the property. Stakes and Homes is the contract owner of the property. So we have the ability to move forward or not. And so as you go through this process, and the reason that we put that language in the contract is that we know, as you discover different things about the feasibility of a project as you get into it, that we don't have to close on the property come July of 2018. And so at this point, it would not be feasible for us to go through with the older plan. It just becomes unfeasible, and we cannot get financing for it.
Thank you.
And I just did want to make one more point. I've got a lot of points here, but I will get into it if counsel wants to hear it. This was, when Todd and I talked about this in December, it was a phone call that I know Todd didn't want to make to me, you know, as far as having to come back through this process. I mean, we really felt positive coming out of our last two zoning requests with our neighbors at the villas. And felt like we certainly developed a relationship with them, developed a trust. So as we said to them at the neighborhood meeting, that was a neighborhood meeting we offered to set up and have with the residents there at their community center. I think one of the first things we said was, the last thing we ever wanted to do was be back before you all again like we are, like we were that night. Because we knew a lot of the reaction we were going to get. If things would have worked, as Todd was just saying with the single family, we would be probably pushing both right now. So I really hope counsel doesn't believe it's any issue of mistrust or a double-cross or anything like that. You know, we have gone back, and I know the town has updated some of their comprehensive plan stuff and added in the UDA section since the ordinance, which certainly this falls within the current application. You know, density-wise, we are a little bit less dense over the entire portion of our property than the villas are. So from a planning standpoint, we do feel that what we're proposing is not crazy, out of line. It does differ from the town's top plan and the UDA. You know, it's unfortunate we're in the situation we are right now for a number of reasons, but we have spent a lot of time between Todd and myself and talking to staff to try to develop a plan that will work for stakes and to proceed on with the project to build a single family in the towns. But also do something that is not lining ten, twenty, you know, groups of buildings right along John Adams Drive, too. We're very sensitive to the layout of the development, trying to keep the courtyard, minimizing any driveways directly connecting to John Adams. So the, how we laid out this property and properties and conditions we tried to put ourselves and agree with the planning commission is solely, you know, for the benefit of trying to help out our neighbors next door. So I just wanted to make that clear to the council.
I have one other thing to add. When we discussed the appraisal piece of it, the way the bank would look at something like this is they don't care about the homes to be built on the property. They only look at the development loan over the streets and the improvements that go in. And then they look at how the lots are going to be purchased at that point in time or taken off of their books. So you can't look at it as an overall project with the homes on it. You have to look at the lot values itself.
Thank you.
Can I make sure? Originally, it was seventy-six single homes that were going to be built. But now you feel it is not feasible or not financially agreeable that you can do this? Is that correct?
So where we, I guess the difference that I would say about how you just reiterated that is that we look at the, we have to get financing for a project like this. And so the bank is going to look at what they would appraise each individual lot price for, how fast they would be absorbed. And then they look at the construction costs and the land costs. And when you add the construction cost, the land cost up for what the appraised value of the lots are, those two things don't add up. And that's what has generated the gap that we prefer to.
As you were saying, the single family was around 420? Was that the figure I remember here?
I said that our out price, our home sales, would be somewhere between 320 and we would have some sales that go up to, up above 400, 420 range. And you have, and I think when you come out and you look at the property, there's a significant amount of grading that does need to take place so that we don't have a steeping bank that comes down to the townhomes. So that, along with some of the new stormwater regulations that came out after our initial proposal, has certainly added cost to the project.
Thank you. Gentlemen? Thank you. Any other comments on this portion as it's presented? Thank you, hearing none. I will close the public hearing section. We move to the consent agenda. We have one change to that, and that is the, we're not going to review the minutes of the April 18 meeting. No cancellation of public hearing for Moose Lodge, purchase of a piece of property down on Roanoke Street. They want to withdraw that request. I have a proclamation of Business Appreciation Month, which is, we have done this over the last three or four years. It is a standard proclamation that I have in front of me and I'm prepared to sign, and the month will be over.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
That's five-oh, thank you very much. Little citizens' comments. We have two scheduled, three, two people scheduled to speak tonight, and then I will open it up to the floor. Our first person is Davina Urban to address counsel regarding local black history. Ms. Urban? How are you?
I'm good. Good evening, counsel. For the first time, I'm here not speaking on behalf of any organization solely as Davina Urban, citizen, resident of Christiansburg 170 Single Link. So as you know, Christiansburg is always talking about how rich our heritage is. Unfortunately, a lot of times when we talk about the richness of our heritage, it, I won't say omits, but there is a missing component that pertains to African-American heritage. A lot of times, people think that Christiansburg Institute is the only local icon in Christiansburg, or that Chase Memorial Baptist is the only local icon. It is not. There are actually about fifteen places in Christiansburg right now that have cultural significance for the African-American community as well as the community at large. So first of all, I want to say thank you for the contributions that you have made to help protect and keep this history going. So I appreciate that as a citizen and as a member of multiple organizations here in the area. Upcoming, in the next few weeks, we're going to be releasing a book on local black history. And a lot of it has a focus on what is here in the area. But one of the things that it really emphasized is the importance of community engagement and the importance of people putting themselves into history and not looking just at the past, but looking at the present and the future. So my encouragement is to see more involvement from our town council as it pertains to wave signs and signs that are coming up to help emphasize some of these places, as it pertains to upcoming cultural trails or things that help to promote tourism as well. There needs to be more of a presence of African-Americans. It's not the town's responsibility, it's our responsibility as a community to be involved and to make sure that our voice and our face and our history is present. So all I'm here to do is to say thank you very much, and I look forward to coming up with future options for helping to make sure that the African-American culture is exhibited in Christiansburg, not just in February.
Thank you, Ms. Urban. Next on the agenda, we have Sandra Stanley to address counsel regarding the intersection of Depot Street Northeast and Stone Street.
Good evening, counsel. I would like to talk to you about what is happening actually at the intersections. It was brought to my attention when I had an accident on March 10, when I was T-boned right there at that intersection. And Officer Mike Nelson told me, he said, "I would strongly advise you to talk to town council about what is happening actually right there." He said, "There have been so many accidents right there at that intersection." And he said, "We have talked to so many people about what's happened right there, and nothing has happened." And with the expansion of Kroger, there's so much traffic. What happened that day, I was going to Kroger, and I looked both ways, did not see anything. There's a pole right there as you come down Stone Street. And I looked, and I did not see the car that, when I started to pull out, I did not see the car that was coming toward me on my right. So I started to cross Depot Street and go up the backside of Kroger like I have done so many times over the past years and years that I have done this. And as you probably, I don't know if you've known, but it's something that I think town council should look into. Traffic has increased because especially as Kroger has done this expansion, there's that much more traffic. And Mike Nelson, he said, "They have worked so many wrecks right there at that intersection." And people, they go up the backside because they try to miss all the traffic. Instead of going through town and missing all that, the traffic lights through town, they go up the backside of Kroger. And they go down those back streets and go up the backside of Kroger. And that way, there's so many accidents right there. So he said, "Maybe if a citizen goes and talks to town council, maybe it'll do some good." So here I am. And I know, it hit me pretty hard, so I've got, I'm still in pain from it. So I would like to advise town council to look into it. And I know there's been so much traffic. And if you look at it, there are poles on both sides of the street. And a lot of times, I have to sit there a lot because of the traffic that's going down Depot Street. And we motioned each other, people going from Kroger and people coming down Stone Street. So if town council could look into it and look at how much traffic there is, maybe you could do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stanley. I'm going to assign that to the street committee to look into.
Okay.
We'll get a report back in a month as soon as we can get it up to a hearing and meeting.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel on any matter? Yes, sir.
My name's Avery Graveson. I'm with the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce. Our office is at 1520 North Franklin Street. I just came here tonight to thank town council for the proclamation for Business Appreciation Month. We think that having a strong business community is vital to having a healthy community overall. And the support of town council, the continued support of town council is just very helpful to the chamber and all our local businesses. On behalf of the chamber and our members and our board of directors, we would just like to thank you all for the proclamation.
Thank you. Avery, would you like to take that back to, since I've just signed and completed?
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tuttle, I see you're here tonight.
I was a supporting neighbor.
Very good, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel? Hearing no one, I will close the citizens' comments. We will go into introductions and presentations. We have an introduction of new town employees. Ryan, is that you?
I want to make, yeah, I can go first. There's a bottom one, one more today. All right. So Ryan Hendricks, I'm with the West Water Operations Division. I'm here to introduce Josh Huff. He is our newest operator trainee. Josh comes to us from Floyd. He grew up in Indian Valley area of Floyd County. Graduated Floyd High School about two years ago, I guess. And so he has started work with us a little over a month ago. We're really pleased to have him. He's catching on very quickly. Shows real aptitude for the utilities sector. And, you know, some of Josh's hobbies are classic cars, fishing, and hunting. So he fits in pretty well down there.
I would say. Thank you, welcome aboard, Josh. James, Travis, who's next? Got anything? Andrew?
I'd like to introduce Will Drake. He's our planner two. Will has been with the town since September of 2015. He was planner one, and he was promoted this past month to the planner two position. Will has an undergraduate, graduate and graduate degree from Virginia Tech. His master's is in urban and regional planning. He also did a PhD program for a while and was a part-time instructor at Virginia Tech in the urban affairs and planning department. He has also been a broadband planner looking at the laying out of fiber in the community and how best to provide internet services within the community. He brings a wealth of knowledge to our department. And as I said, he showed great potential as a planner one, and we were thrilled that he could move into the planner two position. His thoroughness and detail to customer service is par nine. And I really appreciate Will's ability to step up as we've been short-staffed over the last couple of months. And he's been critical to just making sure that we keep going on a day-to-day basis and getting everything done and trying to provide his best customer service and just as best product as we can in the planning department. So I really, I do appreciate that, and I want to point that out this evening as I had Will here before your conference. In the spare time, he is a husband and a father. And although I know, he has said that he's did quite a bit of kayaking and fishing in prior days, his primary pastime now is being a dad. And again, so that's Will Drake. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're glad to have you, buddy.
Welcome up. Welcome stepping up.
Congratulations.
Travis? Y'all got anything? Any other new employees we need to, Randy, are you familiar with anyone else? All right, very good. I've got to return this thing over because I keep losing it. We have Julie Don Orso and Dion Harrison to speak. We have Julie DeLorsso and Dion Harrison to speak regarding Child Abuse Prevention Month.
There you go.
Thank you. Got it right, didn't it?
Good job on the pronunciation. It grows on you.
Kind of rolls off the tongue after a while.
It does, after you say it a few times. As Mr. Mayor said, I am Julie DeLorsso. I am the newly appointed executive director of NRV Cares, and I am absolutely thrilled to be here. So thank you, once again, for having us. We are always so honored when our community, our friends and neighbors in our community, reach out to us and invite us to be a part of something bigger. This is Dion Harrison. She is our CASA coordinator, our CASA director. Yes. And we are super excited because we have a few things going on. As you may or may not have seen around Christiansburg and the NRV, the pinwheel gardens that are outside, and the banners that say, "April is Child Abuse Prevention Month," then we put our little pinwheel pins, and we've got some pins for you guys. We have some things, some exciting things happening. We have a little video to show you, and I'm going to talk a little bit about what we do, just a very abridged version, because I could literally talk for days, and I won't keep you that long. It's been a long evening, so we'll go ahead and start the video. We'll go from there. You can already see.
Instead of focusing on tragic statistics, let's celebrate lives changed. Through compassion, community partnerships, and advocacy, we can strengthen our children and families. Because of your generosity, we are able to speak up for children involved in court proceedings. Uplift families through support and education. And empower our community to be champions for our children. It takes the conviction of all of us to help make a difference in the lives of our children. Support NRV Cares today.
I'm just going to do the rest of my speech in the dark. It may or may not be tagged, Nancy Longner. So as you saw in the video, we do lots of things. Yes, we are, we do work to prevent child abuse in the left, in the river valley, in surrounding areas, but we also work to empower our friends and neighbors in the community, families, children. Because, did you guys know that kids don't come with instruction manuals? Did you guys know that? They don't, by the way. So we have parenting. We offer parenting classes, parenting education, because you have to do, you have to learn things to do them correctly, right, and to do them well. So in our efforts to serve our community, all of our community, not just a certain demographic, our parenting education classes are free. They are easily accessible. They are free of charge. They also include childcare and dinner. So there's that, because everyone loves to, right? So we do offer our parenting education. We offer community education. We were actually just at the Aquatic Center this morning for stewards of children training, and we're so grateful for Terry for giving us that space, lending that space to us for free. So stewards of training is how to, it's a training on how to spot and report sexual abuse in children. And that is not an easy topic to talk about, if you guys know that, but it's really not. But that is also a free training. So any of you who are coaches, who are teachers, who are doctors, who are parents, who are aunts, uncles, grandparents, whoever, if you are surrounded by children, this training is so, so poignant, and we would actually like to extend an invitation to town council. We'd be happy to come in and do a training for you guys as well. So our stewards of training, stewards of children training, because, let's face it, we are stewards for our children, right, for our community. They're not just your children, or my children, or their children. They're our children. So that's what we work to do on the daily, to make sure that we can provide a safe place and happy, healthy childhood for our children, because eventually, those children are going to grow up, and they're going to buy those villages, and they're going to buy our houses and things like that, and they're going to continue our community. So I'm going to introduce Dion, and she is going to talk about our CASA program.
CASA in the River Valley provides services to abused and neglected children. CASA supports volunteers who advocate for safe, permanent homes for abused and neglected children, breaking the cycle of abused and neglected families. Having an advocate for the child is important to the courts, the foster family, the biological family, and all who provide services to the child. One foster parent shared this. Our CASA volunteer has changed our lives. No exaggeration. I'm tearing up just thinking about her. We are so eternally grateful for the dedication and love and tenacity she continues to show toward our foster child. Hundreds and hundreds of individuals and families have been strengthened by our services. Hundreds and hundreds more children have been protected from further abuse and will hopefully not repeat the cycle. One number we cannot report is the most important one. What has been prevented cannot be measured. However, the level or hope prevention provides is clearly noted by the voices of our community partners, clients, and individuals familiar with our volunteers. Prevention agencies like NRV Cares are not available to every community, so when we say we appreciate the support of our continual efforts to prevent child abuse in the River Valley, we really mean it.
It's true. We really do. So like I said, a couple of exciting things happening. We have a brand-new website. We, there is no way possible we could fit in everything that we do into five minutes. It's just not humanly possible. I could try to talk really fast, but that would just be a mess. So check out our new website. It's nrvcares.org. Tomorrow, actually, starting in less than four hours, starts Give Big Day. Do you guys know about Give Big Day, NRV? So exciting, exciting stuff. Starts at midnight, runs to midnight. Our website is ready. Our Give Big Page is ready. Let's do this. Let's raise money for our community. Let's raise money for our children, for our friends, for our neighbors, and it's not, it ends up being for all of us, and not just, you know, those in need. It really will do a lot of good for a lot of people. So anyway, with that, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for listening. Thank you for having us, and we're so grateful for all of what you do in our community.
Thank you, ladies.
I want to mention one thing, as Julie and Dion sit. One thing we have to remember always through child abuse prevention, which is this is the month that we celebrate it. Our pinwheel is our symbol. Our purple is our color, but the reality is, when you look at child abuse prevention cases, or child abuse cases across the country, about eighty percent are neglect. It's easy to find the bruise. It's easy to find the act of physical abuse component of child abuse, but it's the neglect component, which is the at-risk child, which is why NRV Cares plays such a vital role in our community. So if you don't understand or don't appreciate the role they do play, go on the website and look at the parenting classes. I can't tell you how many parents that we deal with on a daily basis that can partake, and they do provide childcare. So there's no impediments. We'll feed you. We'll provide childcare. Just show up. And sometimes, I've even known some of them give a ride, and so it happens. So again, I'm very, very grateful, and I had asked Julie and Dion to come and speak tonight. I sincerely appreciate everything you all do on a daily basis for our children, our community. Child Abuse Prevention Month, for the month of April, it's all about community involvement, community engagement, and community, really, and awareness. So thank you all very much.
Very good. And you have your thing Thursday night?
On the 27th of April at six o'clock at the second floor at the Montgomery County Courthouse. We're going to have our one hour, really, it's thirty minutes. It's a child intervention celebration. We've got a speaker this year, Mommy Clannahan from the Christian Police Department, who is amazing, period. And I'd love to have anybody there. They're always free of charge. We have cake, and it's a little get-together afterwards, and ham biscuits, things of that sort. It's just a community get-together. It doesn't, come as you are. We just would love to have you.
That's at six?
Six o'clock to seven o'clock. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. We now have a resolution commending the Christiansburg Rescue Squad on seventy years of service. And I'm going to ask Councilman Vice Mayor Sam Bishop if he will join me. He is a life member of the Christiansburg Rescue Squad, and I would like to invite council to join us at the podium, because I know that this is something that is near and dear to all of your hearts. So if you would join us... Joe?
We got a big group.
You got a big group. Bring them in. Adrian, if you want to shut that door, please.
As you can imagine, we got a little thinner because we got a call right there.
Now, if y'all will come and come up this way and... We have, yeah, I think we're very fortunate tonight, and as I look out over the crew, I'm going to read this resolution. I read it last week, last time we met, but it was to be voted on, it was voted on and passed, so this is what I would like to present. A resolution commending the Christiansburg Rescue Squad. Whereas the Christiansburg Rescue Squad, founded as a Christiansburg Life Saving and First Aid Crew, will celebrate seventy years of outstanding service to the citizens of the town of Christiansburg and Montgomery County in 2017. And whereas on April 3, 1947, at a meeting at Harrison Hancock Hardware, Lions Club member Evans King suggested, the organization suggested to the club's board of directors that they should co-sponsor a first aid crew with the Christiansburg Fire Department. And whereas the formal name of the crew became Christiansburg Life Saving and First Aid Crew, the new organization was served by two medical advisors, Dr. Lee Cole and Dr. R. H. Groves, and S. C. Richardson was elected president to assist the organizational matters. And whereas the Christiansburg Life Saving and First Aid Crew's first organizational meeting, Jake Holland Mary was elected captain, and the other officers chosen were Hugh Edwards as secretary, Frank Robinson as first lieutenant, Clyde Ping as second lieutenant, Edwin Christman as sergeant, and Frank Lawrence as treasurer. And whereas in June 1947, the Christiansburg Life Saving and First Aid Crew joined the Virginia Association of Volunteer Rescue Squads, and the Christiansburg Fire Department loaned the crew an ambulance and lighting equipment, which began the close working relationship that still endures between Rescue Squad and the Fire Department. And whereas in the early years, emergency calls were handled by Richardson Horn Funeral Home with the support of community, the Christiansburg Life Saving and First Aid Crew was able to purchase a Packard ambulance, a one-ton panel truck, two boats for water rescue, and a crash truck to respond to the scenes of automobile accidents. And whereas the Christiansburg Life Saving and First Aid Crew operated out of the old Fire Department quarters on Pepper Street until 1963, and when the crew purchased a lot on Stone Street and built a new facility with meeting, with meeting, office, and sleeping room. And whereas over the years, the Christiansburg Life Saving and First Aid Crew, now operating as the Christiansburg Rescue Squad, has become a vital partner with the community, teaching the first aid classes, assisting with blood donations, and working every day to ensure the safety and security of the town of Christiansburg. And whereas the Christiansburg Rescue Squad moved to its current home on Depot Street on May 1, 1997, and whereas today, the Christiansburg Rescue Squad has many hard-working and well-trained volunteer members and paid employees led by Chief Joe Cole. And the crew continues its long tradition of exemplary public service and commitment to saving lives and promoting health and safety. Now therefore be it resolved, the council of town of Christiansburg, Virginia, hereby approves this resolution for presentation to Joe Cole, chief of the Christiansburg Rescue Squad, as an expression of the General Assembly's admiration for the squad's commitment to the citizens of the town of Christiansburg in Montgomery County. Upon a call for an I or N vote, the foregoing resolution was at a regular meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council held April 18. Members of the council stood as indicated, opposite their names as follows: Samuel Bishop, Harry Collins, R. Cord Hull, Steve Hucker, Henry D. Showalter, and Bradford J. Stipes. Gentlemen, where do we start? Joe? Right here. Yes, sir.
Now, lifesaving crew, get in behind the mayor. Get in there.
Sure.
Come on up. You all got to get up. We're going to get you in.
I always get to stand on the front, but I guess. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Melissa Becker, Silver. I think I'm late. Can you do it again?
Don't get, you stay where you are. Don't break.
Thank you very much. And Joe, to go along with this resolution, I want to present to the Rescue Squad a key to the city for what you have done for us over the last seventy years, making it a much safer place for us and our citizens to live. Joe, I hope that you will hang both in the appropriate place. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the citizens of Christiansburg and town council for their support. The support this community has for public safety and general rescue is phenomenal, and so we try to return that by providing excellent, high-quality, progressive care to the citizens. We strive for that every day. We have some very special people here I'd like to recognize tonight. We have five of our life members here. We have Matt and Speedy Carroll. In rescue, multi-generations is fairly common in public safety. Gentlemen, thank you for your service. Let's see, we have Kevin Hand, Patrick Lloyd back over here. Thank you, sir. And Councilman Bishop. I'm totally not allowed to call him that as Rescue Squad, but he's Councilman Bishop. Thank you for your service. I also have some other special folks from our officers. Quincy is our chief elected volunteer officer, and she's in charge of all the recruiting. We currently have about seventy-five active volunteers, and that's a lot, but we run the most calls of any agency in the county. We're bumping perhaps forty-eight hundred calls in this coming calendar year, so we're a very, very busy agency. So Quincy, thank you for your recruiting. We have our PR social officer back there in the back, James Belcher, and our chaplain, Buddy Cook, who really steps up when we have bad calls, both for families and for crew members, and takes care of them in providing comfort. And then all the rest of the volunteers. You'll notice some folks in green shirts. These are our newest folks. We put them in green for safety, so they've gone through all of our orientations, so members know who the new folks are. But again, thank you, folks. You know, we really appreciate the support that you've given us over the years.
Thank you. And thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. We now have, Randy, if you would do the introductions. I could not read my writing when I wrote their names down.
Cassandra Sabo, Della Akers, and Courtney Baker to address council in regards to Relay for Life of Montgomery County.
Ladies, thank you.
Thank you, town council, for letting us come and speak with you tonight about the Montgomery County Relay for Life. My name is Cassandra Sabo, and I'm the event lead for this year's relay, which will take place on June 2nd, starting at 6:00 PM, and will last until 6:00 AM on June 3rd. We would love to have everyone come out and join us. It's a lot of family fun, friendly, kid-friendly. Leave your dogs at home. We'll have a lot of activities. We'll have a tug of war, a cake race, a Miss Relay. One of our contestants was actually up here with the Rescue Squad. I won't point out names. The, one of our teams this year is actually heroes helping heroes, which is the police department, fire department, and Rescue Squad teamed up together. We're really excited to have them as a team again this year. We will open at 6:00 PM with Nikki Giovanni will be speaking this year, which we're really excited to have her. So if nothing else, at least come to the opening ceremonies, and because after she speaks, then the survivors and their caregivers will walk their first lap. Hubbell Lighting, Lewis Gill Hospital, Montgomery State Farm. And we're here tonight to ask Town Council to recognize the week of May 26th to June 3rd as Paint the Town Purple Week, where we would like to encourage everyone to wear purple to show support for Relay for Life and our fundraising efforts to raise money for the American Cancer Society. We'd also like the Town Council to declare Thursday, June 1st, Day of Hope.
May I get that date once more? I'm sorry.
Yes. The Paint the Town Purple would be May 26th to June 3rd, Day of Hope, June 1st.
June 1st?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wear purple on June 1st. We'd also like the town to help us out again this year by putting up purple ribbons. Last year, they put them on all the lampposts. And if that's something possible, we can get the ribbons. We would just need to know when we would need to have them to the town so that they would have them up for that week of Paint the Town Purple.
Do you all sell those where the business community or individuals can purchase those to also have something out front?
That is a possibility that we would like to.
How real is that possibility?
Very real.
Okay. And how would someone go about contacting you all to perhaps purchase something like that?
You could probably, well, the easiest way would be either our Facebook page, or, which is Relay for Life from Montgomery County, go to contact Courtney, who unfortunately wasn't able to join us tonight. I do not have her email with me. Or Della.
Yes, I work at Bryant Services, right there on the corner of Depot Street, so everyone knows that is relay land. And I keep all the supplies there at the office, so.
So you have three ways to reach out to get, if a business would like to donate money to have ribbons to put on their business. Once we provide to the town would be, that's just us asking the town to be involved. And we can actually send some information to the Town Council members if they would like.
Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
This year's theme is patriotic. It's the life, liberty, and the pursuit of a cure. And we're really looking forward to this year and looking forward to seeing a lot of the community, Montgomery County, especially Christiansburg, because the relay is held at the Christiansburg High School, and we walk the track. The goal is for every team to have someone on the track all 12 hours. And the website for the relay is relayforlife.org/McGumryVirginia. If you'd like to start a team, we'd love to have new teams. If you'd like to check out our fundraisers, if you'd like to participate, we always need good volunteers to help with setup, tear-down, cleaning, because we do our best to leave the track the way we found it. Sometimes we live it better than we found it, to be honest. And that's, I don't know if anyone had any questions?
I've been involved in Relay for Life, I've been with you know for about 25 years. And it really is amazing, especially at night. They have little bags that you can get to have honor people who have had cancer. And they also have torches around that, and so they'll turn off all the lights and have these all lit up, and it really is something in it. This is cancer's biggest way they try to raise money. And I'm not sure if you know, but my tech had theirs last week, and they usually get about $450,000. And they usually get a year about $150,000. And if anybody would like to contribute, I'm always willing to take so.
Yes, Steve has a team, Holy Spirit and friends. If you can't start your own team, join Steve. Like he said, donate to him.
Sandra, please, I have a, this is a draft of proclamation that I was going, I'm going to get into it in better or permanent form. May I bring it out to you?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
American Cancer Society Day of Hope proclamation. Whereas Relay for Life is synonymous with the American Cancer Society and their efforts to raise funds for cancer research, to find a cure for cancer, especially during Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas Relay for Life events are held each year in communities around the nation to raise funds in support of finding a cure for cancer. And whereas Relay for Life events are held each year in southwest Virginia and in surrounding communities. And whereas a highly successful Relay for Life has been held in Christiansburg for many years and has contributed significantly to the efforts of those to find a cure for cancer. Whereas 2017 Relay for Life will be held in Christiansburg High School, June 2nd and 3rd, 2017, at the football stadium. Whereas in preparation for this event and to raise awareness of the importance of participation in this 2017 Relay for Life, many activities are planned such as Paint the Town Purple with purple ribbons and bows along Main Street, Renick Street, and Franklin Street. Whereas local businesses and residents are encouraged to purchase ribbons that will go toward the fundraising cause and to wear purple and place purple ribbons along the street and in shop windows during Friday, May 26th through Saturday, June 3rd. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dean Michael Barber, Mayor of Christiansburg, with the full support of the Christiansburg Town Council, proclaimed that May 26th through June 3rd be set aside as community-wide preparation for Relay for Life event, and that Thursday, June 1st be designated a Day of Hope inviting a cure for cancer.
Thank you.
Prepare this, and we'll have it for you shortly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes the introductions and presentations. Is there any old business coming from council? Not aware of any new business. Council action on a conditional use permit request by Terry Stike, agent for P.A. Duncan Management, Inc., for a public amusement business at 200 Midway Plaza Drive Northwest, tax parcels 406-2-6A, 6B, in the B3 General Business District, approximately 4.1 acres, and in the I2 General Industrial District, approximately .08 acres. The public hearing was held earlier in this meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I would make the motion that we approve the conditional use permit as requested by Mr. Stike in regards to a public amusement business located at 200 Midway Drive Northwest, and as was included in the agenda this evening pursuant to the public hearing.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Best of luck. I think it'll go over very, very well.
There were trampoline parks here way back when, but they weren't nearly as safe as what you're proposing. Very good.
There's a lot of excitement out there, so.
There really is.
We really do. There is a lot. I went to a, Melissa Powell and I went to a fifth.
You went to a trampoline park?
Yes, we did. They're not as durable as they used to be, or is it my knees? Melissa and I went to a series of town council, mock town council meetings at the elementary schools in Christiansburg. And I do believe that was some of the questions that were asked, particularly at Falling Branch, maybe. All of them were wanting to know about this particular park and if we thought it would pass, so.
Well, Mr. Stike does a very good job with what he's had his hands on thus far in the community and the town. And I'll tell you, he's also demonstrated a willingness to modify on the fly, to support frequently changing trends. And I guess in the business community you have to do that, and I have no doubt that this will be a success. And I have heard nothing but positive comments and feedback from the members of the community. And so I do think you'll have a lot of support from the community at large.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hutter?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
That is 5-0, thank you very much. It passes.
Terry, I just hope that you don't expect the council to.
It's nice, nice. For the young ones.
It'd be negative for you. We'll come to the ribbon, we'll obviously come to the ribbon cutting, but yon yon it without, on the sampling. Next on the agenda is one Nelson Cambria tank removal contract. Mr. Nelson, and you have five other contracts to talk about, so you wanna just, let's get this one out of the way first.
Let's get it out of the way. Here, Barbara, thank you, members of council. For you is a contract for removal of the Cambria water tank. As you know, it's located for everyone's benefit at Cambridge Street Northeast, in front of a channel of concrete in the curve. We, having completed our effective storage project and having studied the Cambria water system, we determined that that tank was not necessary, not needed, not at the cost of rehab of between $200,000 and $300,000. So we put a bid out. This project will remove the tank, be taken, disassembled, hauled away, removed, foundation removed, below grade piping, and the site will be restored. We issued a bid, received four bids, highest being $81,500, lowest being $43,400. So for you is a contract with William G. Simmons Company for removal of this tank.
I would move that we approve the Cambria tank removal contract as presented and awarded to the, with it.
I second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion?
I don't know what it's gonna look like when it's not there. It's always been.
You know, that thing's been there as long as I've been, in the 70 years, so I guess it's okay. I have, do have some questions from property owners wanting to know, you know, what's going there. Now, that's our property, it's not scheduled to be, anything else go on that we know of?
Just landscaping.
It's gonna be landscaped up. All right, very good. Very, very good.
There we go.
Got a motion and a second. We're ready to go. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hutter?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
That is 5-0, thank you very much. Five contracts for construction, engineering, and inspection term services. Wayne?
Yes, sir.
You gonna do them one at a time or separate?
Oh, we'll just do them all at once.
Okay, very good.
Yes, sir. We solicited for proposals for CEI services, that's construction, engineering, and inspection. We received five proposals. We interviewed and evaluated all five. And given our workload, that we anticipate that this is an initial one-year with up to four-year renewable contract, zero dollar, we have decided to issue a contract to all five. They have varied experience that we think, we think will meet all our needs. They are listed here as SEPI Engineering and Construction Incorporated, A. Morton Thomas and Associates Incorporated, M.D.P. Madder and Craig Incorporated, and C.H.A.
These are, if I'm not mistaken, these are a, we'll call you if you need to, there's nothing up front until we actually put them into service, or is there a retainer?
No, nothing, no guarantees.
Okay.
No guarantees at all. But we are, with this, if approved, we will be soliciting from each consultant, a proposal for a project that we have on the horizon here, just to have that in place.
Pretty good.
And just to further explain that the service they provide is during construction, they're a third-party inspector representing the town, the owner, and they watch over the contractor, the construction, material testing, and making sure that we're getting the value out of the product.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion in a second to approve awarding all five contracts subject to use, is that correct? All five contracts. All right, any other discussion, questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hutter?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
That is 5-0, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a reappointment of John Overton to the Montgomery County Economic Development Commission. John is here tonight. He has served, how many years have you served, John? Come on.
Too many to continue.
Stand up, let us get a real look at you. There you go. I believe this appointment will be backdated to December 31st. We've been trying to get this, is that correct? We've been trying to work this thing out for several weeks. John's been out of town. I have reviewed his attendance records with the Alliance Board, Economic Development Commission. They are in guidelines as to what we are requesting. Over the last four years, it's averaged better than 60% attendance, which is not as good as you can get. He's had other years that he's had 80%. Some years he's had maybe 60 or 50%, but he's all, he is represented as well. He serves on that, I believe, with Councilman Stipes, is that correct?
Councilman Stipes, president, yes.
Okay, very good. And I'll entertain that motion.
I make a move.
Go ahead, Tim.
Oh, you go ahead, you start it first.
I would move that we reappoint Mr. Overton to the Montgomery County Economic Development Commission.
Have a second. Any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Overton, for your service to the town.
John, I believe you chaired that commission a couple of years back, didn't you?
Yes, I just came off.
Just came off as chairman of the commission, okay. That's very good. So we have a motion in a second. John, thank you for your service. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hutter?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
That is 5-0, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a reappointment of John Overton to the Montgomery County Economic Development Commission. John is here tonight. He has served, how many years have you served, John? Come on.
Too many to continue.
Stand up, let us get a real look at you. There you go. I believe this appointment will be backdated to December 31st. We've been trying to get this, is that correct? We've been trying to work this thing out for several weeks. John's been out of town. I have reviewed his attendance records with the Alliance Board, Economic Development Commission. They are in guidelines as to what we are requesting. Over the last four years, it's averaged better than 60% attendance, which is not as good as you can get. He's had other years that he's had 80%. Some years he's had maybe 60 or 50%, but he's all, he is represented as well. He serves on that, I believe, with Councilman Stipes, is that correct?
Councilman Stipes, president, yes.
Okay, very good. And I'll entertain that motion.
I make a move.
Go ahead, Tim.
Oh, you go ahead, you start it first.
I would move that we reappoint Mr. Overton to the Montgomery County Economic Development Commission.
Have a second. Any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Overton, for your service to the town.
John, I believe you chaired that commission a couple of years back, didn't you?
Yes, I just came off.
Just came off as chairman of the commission, okay. That's very good. So we have a motion in a second. John, thank you for your service. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hutter?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
That is 5-0, thank you very much. Consideration of Appointment to New River Valley Economic Development Alliance Board of Directors, Mr. Wingfield?
Afforded email received from Charlie Jewell, who is executive director of the New River Valley Economic Development Alliance. They represent the entire New River Valley in regards to economic development. They would be basically the state first primary contact in regard to a large economic development project. They meet basically quarterly, the third Wednesday of February, May, August, and November at 4:00 PM. And basically, they are opening up the board to town membership. They previously had only county or city membership or private sector of membership on the board.
Mr. Wingfield, there's a cost associated with this for the locality, correct?
Well, yes, we are currently paying them $5,000 a year as a member. So basically, we are eligible under that.
So we wouldn't have to distribute any more funds?
No, no, there'd be no.
Or should we want to fill in a position on the board, which we are now entitled to?
Correct.
These are normally, I think you said, normally publicly elected officials, but can be?
It's typically either elected official or the town manager.
Okay.
With voice and our pleasure, I, I think that, well, it seems like it'd be similarly, I mean, very well situated to the town manager. Myself, not to throw it on to you, Mr. Wingfield, but, what, do you know what times they meet?
4:00 PM.
And that's obviously during the week as well? What, in particular days?
Second Wednesday?
Third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday each month?
It's quarter, February, August, and November. Those are the meetings a year.
I think there's a better person beyond there than me, of course, from council. And obviously, we want someone that can always be present. I know a lot of us work and have obligations to. I think there's a better person to be on there than me, of course, from council. And obviously, we want someone that can always be present. I know a lot of us work and have obligations during the week. I don't know. Is there any... Do you have any recommendation, Mr. Wingfield?
I don't. I don't mind serving if you want me to, but I'm certainly not opposed to council member serving either.
If I might add, I know that this year, Henry, we have two council members and one citizen, or one other member on the regional commission, and I think we have, what, another year or so on that? It's a rotating term. I think we will rotate off of there in probably the end of 18. Does that sound good to you? I might suggest, if he's available, I might suggest that we ask Councilman Collins.
Uh... I don't think he's available.
It doesn't matter. I mean, it's fine. We can go with the town manager.
I think I would like to recommend that we appoint Mr. Wingfield to take that job for right now.
And Steve, I agree with you, but I'm just wondering, is there anybody from council that would... Or the mayor that would want to do that? Would want to be a part of this? I just know my schedule wouldn't allow it, and again, I think there's more qualified people than myself to do this.
There's no...
No runs jumping up.
There's no cash. I mean, there's no stipend for being on this committee, so...
Where's the meeting held at?
It would be at the New River Economic Development Office in Fairlong. It's back behind the old St. Albans building.
Well, just looking at a meeting, it looks pretty... You have county administrators on there, Floyd, Giles, looks like some council members, attorneys, a lot of foundations, for instance, Virginia Tech Foundations. Yeah, I wouldn't... I think Randy or the town manager's position would fit well in there.
Could you do it with your schedule, Mr. Wingfield?
You allow it in play?
I can fit it in. It's only a quarterly meeting.
You allow him to allow an alternate in case you can't go?
Yes, I could.
And who would be your first alternate in that?
Well, if council member not interested, I might suggest Plaining Director Andrew Warren.
Well, I think that's just absolutely wonderful.
I'd like to touch on Randy was actually our economic director here at the town for a number of years, and probably still is.
Probably still is. It's one of the three...
I recommend Randy.
...ads he's wearing.
Yeah.
Then I'm assuming that the recommendation is the... Is... Mr. Wingfield?
Absolutely. If there's no member of the unit of council or elected that would like to do it, I think Mr. Wingfield's perfectly situated. I don't want to step on your toes in council.
Got the motion? Got the second? Is it true? Got a motion, second? Certainly, there's nobody to question it. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Can I get the second?
I second it.
Okay.
Set with Andrew as an alternate if I can't make a meeting?
That's fine. That's fine.
Thank you. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hutter?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. That's five oh. Thank you, Mr. Wingfield. Any committee reports from anyone today? James Trapp, can you all get with these ladies on the... When they would need to have the ruben for our poles, streetlights and stuff? And about how many or how many yardage or feet or whatever? They'll be with you. They'll find it out. Thank you. Staff reports, town manager?
Just to remind everybody that next May 2nd, 6:00, we have a budget work session scheduled. Also, I would like to try to schedule another meeting on the North Christiansburg Regional Park. Kind of let it sit for a little bit, but like to bring it back to you, whatever date you would see fit. Of course, we have regular scheduled meetings on the 9th and the 23rd. If you want to try to meet the 16th...
I'm fine with that. I think we do need to... We need to talk about that.
I think so.
Yeah, when's the budget work session again?
The 2nd.
Six o'clock?
Yes.
Community... Okay. So we're looking at the 16th. Is that a closed meeting?
It... No, it's an open meeting.
Like a work session?
Yes.
A work session. Okay.
Will we be doing that at 6:00, Mr. Mayor? Or 7:00?
Does that work? 6:00?
Please.
Henry?
Yeah, that'll work.
All right, 6:00 on the 16th with North Christiansburg Regional Park update. Thank you very much. Town attorney?
I have nothing.
You have nothing? Other staff? Val?
I just wanted to let you know that we do have the budget compiled. Randy and I have a lot of work to do on it yet. Work session next week, we'll be bringing before you for your consideration some discussion about water and sewer rates. The study is kind of in the last stages of punching out some numbers on that, that we want to have a serious discussion with you all about, maybe feel about what they're proposing as rates, and then also some guidance from you on community support and community development programs, so that hopefully we can then take all that information and come up with a good draft budget for you all within a very short period of time.
Very good. Any questions, comments? Thank you, Val. Any other staff reports?
Counsel, just quickly, when you're talking about the location of the Cambria tank, that's a proposed location for a wave finding sign.
Very good.
Cambria area sign.
You'll spruce that up pretty good, won't you? You'll spruce it up pretty good over there, won't we, eventually? Thank you.
Very good, listen.
Yes, it will.
Okay. Council reports. Mr. Hutter?
Well, I just have one thing. I'm not sure if people are aware that the Boston Marathon was held just recently, and you know, it's 26 miles, and you have to qualify to run in this race. It's probably the greatest marathon that's ever done. And I copied down the names of three people from Christiansburg who ran in it, and Marty says that he saw five. But I think, you know, five, three, or five is commendable, that we had that many people from Christiansburg running in the Boston Marathon, and even more so, Patricia Richardson, who is 55 years old, she ran it three hours and 45 minutes. So a lot of times, we all say, well, I'm getting too old to do this type of thing, do a 5K or something like that. And Patricia did the 26 and did that. So I just wanted to say that. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Henry?
I don't have anything to report, but I would like to address some of the servant. I appreciate you being here and mentioning, you know, the cultural significance in many areas in Christiansburg, but I'd like to encourage you to meet with our PR director sometime to talk about, mention wave finding signings, which is something we're starting, and introduce a conversation on locations there. I'd also like you, which I believe the Bike Way and Committee has met, about certain hubs, like for Christiansburg Institute. Let's see, Mr. Leonard's here. But maybe meet with that board when they meet and just share your thoughts and see where they're proposing certain hubs. Great points made tonight, so... And this is something we're continually working on, so we definitely need some pin foot.
I got it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Very good. Good as you. Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Recreation Commission meeting is at 6:00 P.M. on the Monday, May 1st, at the Recreation Center. Everybody is welcome. We've got a few items on the agenda that may interest you, but always welcome for anybody that'd like to be present. And for my last time to announce it, I've done it 15 times now, this coming Thursday on the 27th of April at 6:00 P.M. across the hall, the road here, on the second floor is our Child abuse prevention seminar. Would love to have anybody present. Again, it's a very low-key informal event, but with a very high-powered, in my opinion, and charged message with a wonderful speaker provided by the CPD, Mo McLenahan. Again, at 6:00 P.M. this coming up Thursday across the hall on the second floor. Would love to have you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bishop?
I don't have that, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hall and myself met this evening with a student from Virginia Tech on the... What we're trying to organize with the town council and the high school, you know, to get students involved with town council, and so we're working on that project right now.
Very good.
We don't have anything set yet, but we will soon.
Thank you. I had a conversation, since we're going to eventually talk about the North Christiansburg Recreational Park, I had a conversation with Chuck King, who currently leases that property from us, and he leases it for his cattle operation. He does not pay rent, but what he does is he maintains and helps to mow the place, and he wants to also build... He's built some fencing. He would like to continue another year under that guideline of helping to... With the fencing over there and with his cattle keeping the area mowed down. So we... I think that was a deal that Mr. Helms, I believe it came before council a couple of years ago, but Chuck is interested in continuing that. If...
How long is that for? A month? A month?
About a year to year, actually. It's...
When's the renewal date?
To be honest, I don't know that there is a formal contract.
He said it... Chuck said it's coming up soon, so I'm thinking it may be July.
I'd, of course, like to maybe wait a little closer to July, then, not the 30th of June, but we have a meeting scheduled for the 16th and see where we're kind of at. That's what I'd like to do.
It's been a while since we've seen that lease, so if you get a copy...
I'll take a look through the files and get a copy.
Yeah. Let's put it on agenda in early June, I would assume. First meeting in June.
Right.
I think that's enough time.
Okay. I had an interesting conversation with John Gunter, one of our detectives, Police Department, which had nothing to do with police work. He has made a very interesting offer through the Christiansburg High School baseball team and baseball booster club. They recently, and there's a picture here, have a new scoreboard that has been installed by Motor Mile. It was a much better addition than what they had before. The pole... The old scoreboard has come down. The poles that are... This hell, that scoreboard are still up. They're not going to take them down. And they have offered us the opportunity to use those... That particular sign, I think he said it is five by 10, at no cost to us. All we have to do is put up the... Put up what we would like on that sign. And he made the comment that, you know, we have been knowing... We use that field quite a bit for other... For a lot of the World Series and tournament games that we have.
What's that at, Mr. Mayor? It's at the high school.
I mean, which area on the fence?
Right here. This is now gone. It should be right in here somewhere near the flagpole. So we'd be almost in dead center field on it.
If they want us to see that.
They replaced... They recently replaced the flagpole. They now have a 20-foot flagpole. Works better, but he's just saying to advertise your support of the Christiansburg Blue Demons at no charge, just the cost of making the sign. I think it would look great since the town colors are very similar to the Blue Demon colors. I would like for the town to come up with whatever you would like to place on the sign, such as town logo, rec logo, and however wording we want it to do. So that is before us. I do have to... I think we do have to contact Montgomery County Schools, Dan Varnado, to let him know that we have an interest and it's been offered to us. So I'd like to pursue something on that, if you all don't mind. I think we talked the cost of the sign, depending...
Several hundred dollars, but that's small in the big picture.
Two, 50 to 300, maybe four. Maybe a little.
Mayor, instead of recognizing one sport, and I appreciate John bringing it up, I know his son plays baseball, and he's real passionate about it. You know, since we're going to explore this, I'd like to explore for a football stadium as well, if it's... And reach out. If we're going to contact the school board, we might as well do it for all the sports that you can put a display up. I know the football stadium, you can walk in, you can see the displays that they have up there. Many are outdated, so I'd encourage, if we're going to explore this, that we look at all sports, you know, showcasing our logo or seal.
I would suggest that we do that. I would suggest we start with the baseball field, since it was presented to us first. I do know that our rec department, and one of the reasons they've offered it to us is